Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council. It's April 21st, 2022. It's 6 o'clock and I have the prayer and the pledge. If you will, bow with me. Father, I thank you for this day, this chance that we get to spend another day here in Murfreesboro. Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you continue to give us. Lord, we ask for your wisdom tonight. Lord, we thank you for this past weekend, the bilty that we've had together all around the city. And really thank you for the blessing that we can be here, that, Lord, we're not locked in, that we're able to be able to spend time in our city, that we're able to spend time with one another. Lord, we ask for those, to be with those people that need you either spoken or unspoken, and ask you to give us wisdom as we make your decisions tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a Stars Award tonight. Randolph?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As you know, the purpose of the Stars Award is intended to recognize outstanding employees who embody the city's standards for service excellence and exemplify the city's core service values, which is to treat customers with respect and to provide outstanding customer service, both internally and externally. Council, tonight, recognition is one of those that may tug at your heart a little bit. For the month of March, we have two recipients for the Stars Award. They are Frau Captain David Bricker and Officer Jaden Davis. Captain Bricker is a veteran firefighter who's been with the city for over 19 years. Officer Davis is a police trainee who has been with the city for a little under four months. He couldn't be here tonight because he's in the police academy in Nashville. Each time these gentlemen put on their uniform, they are prepared to put their lives on the line, and we thank them for their service. You know, I was really looking forward to tonight's presentation to really have both Captain Bricker and Davis here, because it would have been an awesome photo to see both a veteran firefighter and a rookie officer together, representing our cities. Council, these gentlemen are receiving the Stars Award for the month of March because they each demonstrated exemplary service, outstanding courtesy, support, and showed extraordinary empathy for an elderly lady in need. They were nominated by city employees Chandra Romack and Clay Malone for the following reasons. An elderly lady called 911 to report that her water was not working. As it turned out, the bill was past due and her water had been shut off. Captain Bricker and Officer Davis assessed the situation and recognized that the elderly lady was in dire need of help. So without hesitation and/or direction from their superiors, they both gave money out of their own pocket, pockets, to purchase food, water, and snacks for this lady. Well, they didn't stop there. They also contacted the lady's family to make sure that the water bill got paid and was turned back on again. Obviously, the lady was extremely grateful for their kind service and generous help. These gentlemen went above and beyond their call of duty to help this young lady. As I conclude, Captain Bricker and Officer Davis, on behalf of the city of Murfreesboro, I want to thank you for your sincere actions and helping the elderly lady in making sure that the city of Murfreesboro provide excellent service. And we thank you. Thank you for your service.
Good stuff.
Thank you. Hey, so I'm going to embarrass Benjen, Benjamin, Cass, and Emily Rose. So this is the captain's family. So Benjamin, we would have had you come up and say the Pledge of Allegiance if I hey, thank y'all for, too often we don't recognize the families. And so y'all are the ones who do a lot of the heavy lifting too. So thank y'all for being here tonight. Okay, you have 15 items on your consent agenda.
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have the ordinance 22007, excuse me, 007 Fiscal Year 22 Budget Amendment. This is second and final reading, but I think we have some changes, Erin, that need to be made to that.
That's right. We have a few changes where we added additional funds for parking garage equipment and related revenues from the county. Community development revenue and expense budgets need to be amended to align the actual grant award with our budget and update for the previous year's grants and our carryforward amounts. And we're also increasing the airport fuel sale revenues and corresponding purchases for ACAL.
If there are any questions, I'll move for approval. Second.
This is ordinance 22007 as amended. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to land use matters, item 17, ordinance 22002, zoning of approximately 258.8 acres located along Northwest Broad Street. This is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. Stain?
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have ordinance 22005 correcting the zoning boundary for the Oakland Corp PRD.
So move.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have ordinance 22003 for amendments to the city code regarding retail liquor store regulations.
This amendment to the city code, Chapter 4, clarifies the application and approval process for certificates of compliance for retail liquor stores. Any questions? Legal is here to help answer.
What's the essence of it?
I'll let Assistant City Attorney Roman Hankins answer those because he drafted the ordinance.
Councilman LaLance, the essence of the ordinance, right now in our certificate of compliance approval process, it's very generalized as far as how the city recorder's office goes about taking in applications and bringing those applications to the council for approval. Just to quickly walk through here, one of the very first things the ordinance does is define that the city recorder includes both the actual city recorder and any person designated to carry out the city recorder's duties relative to certificate of some compliance. Section 2, the current section, subsection C3, talks about public notice requirements as required by the Alcohol and Beverage Commission. They no longer require those public notice requirements, so we are substituting with just some general language that the applicant has to comply with whatever regulations the commission puts out. Section 3 is where we get to the meat of the application process. And essentially what we're doing is we're setting out that applications have to be complete, and they will be considered in the order in which completed applications are turned in. So if an applicant comes in and their application is not deemed complete by the city recorder's office, that application will be rejected and they won't be put in line for that application's consideration. Also says that once the, once the available licenses or certificates of compliance are handed out, that all, anybody left in the queue after that would be notified that there are no more availabilities.
Well, those ones that are in the queue, will they stick around in the queue until there are available? You know, i.e. we have 5,000 more people move in?
No, I think, I think we had, we had discussed the possibility of that, but it was going to be administratively a little too difficult just based on the way that population estimates are updated every year. It'd be a long time for the city recorder's office to try to sit on that list. So the way we've got it structured here in subsection 6 is that after all the applications, or after all the certificates of compliance are handed out, every pending application is then just administratively denied. And when we have our next population estimate update, if we have new certificates available, that will be announced, and then the application period will be reopened.
Do they have to pay to apply?
Yes.
They have to pay to apply, and we don't accept payment unless the application is complete. So with this ordinance change, it's a first-come, first-served basis. So we won't accept the payment until the application is complete. And it's, once we get a complete application, first complete application, we take that with your payment.
But if we end up going through all of them and there's six completed applications that don't, already can't even be reviewed because we run out, we still keep their payment?
We wouldn't have taken their payment. We'll take the first complete application and payment for that. Anybody else, we would tell them that we've already received one complete application.
Okay, no. Thanks.
Any questions for Roman?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 20, ordinance 22004. This is amending the city code regarding special event hours.
This amendment basically just sets designated prohibited hours for beer sales for a special event permit. The current hours basically reads that it's 12 hours in a 24-hour period. So this more clearly defines those hours and prohibits specific hours, making it administratively clearer for staff to issue those special event permits.
Any questions?
So move.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to resolutions, Resolution 22R10. This is the city schools' resolution for employee inflation-related bonuses.
Yes, this is the school's budget amendment resolution that recognizes the one-time city council contribution to city schools to help fund those bonuses to the school employees and will be funded out of general funds fund balance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to land use matters. You have the sewer allocation variance for Memorial Boulevard for Whataburger. Ms. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. I'll fill in for Mr. McKnight on this one today. This is a sewer allocation variance for a proposed Whataburger on Memorial Boulevard. It's for a portion of the airport property that, that sticks out to Memorial Boulevard on the south side of Airport Road. Whataburger is, I'm not sure of the status of that, of that acquisition from the city, but Whataburger is going to purchase that property, and we've received plans already for that Whataburger on that, on that property. They are requesting a variance to the sewer allocation ordinance. They would be allowed 3.2 single-family unit equivalents based on the allocation ordinance and the acreage of the parcel. And they are, they project that they will need 5.92 single-family unit equivalents, exceeding the allowable sewer volume by 2.72 single-family unit equivalents, and that's what they're requesting a variance for. Whataburger requested a similar variance for their location that's under construction on Old Fort Parkway right now. Staff use the advantages of job creation and sales tax revenue of greater benefit than the requested additional sewer capacity. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ms. Blomley, I think you have public hearings that need to be scheduled.
I do, I do. We have a public hearing earlier tonight. You, you approved on second reading the zoning for the Legacy Sports property, the Hord family's property on Northwest Broad Street. Ms. Rush's presentation to city council on first reading on April 7th, she mentioned that, that we would be coming back to amend the portion of the property that is proposed to be in the Gateway Design Overlay District. And so with the approval on second reading of the entire property in the Gateway Design Overlay District, we have brought before the Planning Commission and are bringing before you a separate ordinance that would, that would remove a portion of that property from the Gateway Design Overlay District number one. And this is based upon the proposed layout, the preliminary layout that's been provided to the city staff of Legacy. What is proposed to remain in the GDO-1 is the area in green on the map that I've got on the screen, if we could pull that up. The area in the green is the frontage along Northwest Broad Street. That's the area that, where the, the retail hospitality and restaurant-type uses are proposed to be located. And the area in the blue are the recreation fields and the, the large indoor recreation facilities. And so we are requesting that you set a public hearing from May the 5th to remove the area in blue from the Gateway Design Overlay District. Planning Commission scheduled a public hearing for May the 4th on this, so we would expect to have a recommendation from Planning Commission in time for a May 5th public hearing before council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? What date, again?
May the 5th.
May the 5th, okay.
And we already, we already have a, a public hearing scheduled for May 5th, so it's a night that, that we'll be having a meeting.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Oh.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blomley. All right, we'll move to items on motion. We have the 4th of July fireworks show.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here to approve the agreement for pyro shows. Every year, Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation hosts a large 4th of July event, and the agreement with pyro shows permits a professional firework company to handle this aspect of the show. The agreement is for $35,000 and will be funded through the department's operating budget. Be glad to answer any questions.
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Not particularly to you, to whoever can answer this. Is it a particular place that people go to watch fireworks that is prohibited? I received a few calls last year. The people said they were on top of, wait a second, on top of the parking garage across from Middle Tennessee? I mean, Murfreesboro Electric, oh, Murfreesboro Electric Building? And they said the year before last, they let them up there and it was fine, you know, no problem. But this year, they all got up there and they were asked to leave. Is that a prohibited area?
I'm not sure on that, but we can add that to our list. When we, you know, about a month out from this particular event, we do contact businesses just to tell them that, you know, this, this event will be going on and ask, you know, if people are allowed to park in the parking lot. So I can definitely check into that.
Not necessary to park, and they were up on the top, you know, just families up there, some sitting. And the year before last, they were allowed to do it, but this past year, they were not. So I couldn't answer the question, so I don't, I don't know.
That's, that's a county facility, so it would depend on what, how they feel about having like parking garage and how they feel about the safety of the people up there and things like that. So private, it would be the same as with private businesses. They could allow people to do very, go into various spots to watch the fireworks, but, you know, that would be all up to the county, the city.
Right, I didn't know how to answer, so.
Yeah. They should talk to the county probably on, on that one.
Okay, thank you. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ms. Councilman Lance just reached over and asked, when is the July 4th celebration?
I'll send him a memo.
I'm sure you knew that.
He hasn't had his medicine, that's all.
All right.
About Shane, right?
All right, we're going to talk about
You know why they didn't ask that, Madeline?
We're going to talk about
Stupid, but I'm not that stupid, remember?
That's right. We're not going to put a sidewalk down the middle of the road, right, Rick? I watch the Planning Commission meetings, so.
Nothing but concrete.
We're going to talk about purchasing uniforms, clothing, and equipment. Chief Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. For your consideration, this evening is a request to approve a purchase agreement with GALLS. As part of the By Board Master Agreement, purchases through GALLS will consist of uniforms and other equipment items for the police and fire and rescue departments. Funding will be through each department's respective operating budgets. This time, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We also have a request for new police vehicles. Chief Bowen?
For your consideration, is a request to purchase 25 Ford Explorers and five specialty vehicles off state contract. These units will serve as both replacements and additions to the fleet at an approximate cost of $1,049,000. Funding will be through the American Rescue Plan Act. The Ford Explorers will be primarily marked vehicles that will be assigned to the Unicorn Division. The five specialty vehicles will be utilized by our Criminal Investigations Division. This time, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Chief, we always get asked why we're buying, you've talked about this for years going through the purchase, but why did we buy SUVs as opposed to cars? Can you explain why we now buy SUVs instead of cars?
A lot of it, initially, we bought the sedans and the SUVs as kind of a test of storage, comfort. Talking with Jack at Fleet Services, he seems to think that the mileage is actually better on the SUVs and just the performance overall, the all-wheel drive in the SUVs has turned out to be a bonus to us. And big thing is just the ability for different-sized officers to get in and out of these vehicles. So there's, there's a lot of factors, from comfort to reliability to performance.
We went to, I think it was an impala at one point.
We did.
And we got lots of complaints that the vests and the belts were hurting the officers. And I think we even had more workers' comp claims on, on back injuries with those. And that's one of the reasons I think we, years ago, we switched to the SUVs as well.
Yeah. And I can tell you, since we've switched to the SUVs, we've gotten a lot of officer satisfaction out of those vehicles. They've been a good unit for us. We always wondered what would truly replace the old Crown Vic, but I think that with this particular unit, that we've got something that's been successful for us. And, and we, I always talk to Jack about vehicles, and he seems pretty confident in the maintenance and the upkeep of them as well.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Chief?
Move for approval, second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Chief, and also, this past Monday, Kona Ice in Middle Tennessee, William Rodriguez is the new, he bought the Kona Ice company, but he set up at Oakland's Park
Yes, sir.
for the police officers and the firefighters. It was the 18th, so it was tax day. So while everyone was paying taxes, Kona Ice gave away free Kona Ice to all the, the kids who wanted to come out. So say thank y'all for setting that up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And thank you to Kona Ice for doing that. All right, we'll talk about new cart purchases. Russell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is the request of approval to purchase 1,404 residential carts from ReRig Pacific Company. These carts will be delivered to new residents as well as current residents electing to purchase additional carts and to help us replace damaged carts. This expenditure is $93,900 and is funded in the department's FY '22 budget. I am available for any questions.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 28. This is Amendment 1 to the contract with Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Transportation Department is requesting your approval of the Amendment 1 to the contract with Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency. In 2019, the city contracted with Mid Cumberland to provide paratransit services for the city. At that time, we did negotiate a lower cost than what they had proposed because we knew the service would grow significantly. What we didn't realize is how significant that growth would be. As a result, we have explored options to try to control that cost. One of those was to implement existing FTA regulations, which we did in February. Another one was to work with Mid Cumberland on lowering the cost per trip. Through those negotiations, Mid Cumberland has agreed to lower the cost per trip Monday through Friday by $15 and on Saturdays by 10. As a result, annually, that will save the city around $100,000 each year for the remainder of the contract. So we recommend that you approve that amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I move for approval. Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Russell. Russ, we'll move to boarding commit... Do we have any licensing? Have a couple beer permits?
We have one beer permit for an ownership and name change for a grocery market at 1156 East Main Street. The applicant has met requirements for a beer permit and has passed all the building and code inspections, so we're ready to issue the permit once approved.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have item 29 and 30, reappointments to the Cable TV Commission and the Golf Commission.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one statement to be paid.
Yes, this is a statement that's gonna be paid out of the CIP for $276,871.70 to E. Evan Cope Client Trust Account.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business from staff?
Wednesday, we are meeting for the day on our retreat where we were last time, Legacy Farms. Start at 6:00 AM and-
6:00 AM?
See who's listening. No, nobody, nobody, what you, nobody else is listening, so.
We just wasn't coming. I'm out.
I'll start at 9:00.
Start at 9:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Breakfast at 8:30. Start at 9:00.
We say 9 o'clock. All right, any other business from staff? Any other business from council?
May I have two items?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
One, I received some inquiries, and I'd like the council to consider our employees. We making Good Friday a holiday for our employees. Other entities, municipalities, they are doing it, and I'd like to see our employees have Good Friday off.
You wanna go over both of them or just that one first? You got-
It's a separate item.
Okay. I'm good with it. I guess we better make sure and check, how does that impact the number of hours they work and all that concept? Is there any kind of impacts with that? I mean, I'm all for it, just generally speaking. I just wanna make sure we don't get ourselves in some weird, you know, don't- Do we take people, I mean, like, I don't know the ramifications. Are we gonna take people out of earning some money that day by doing that? Or is it paid automatically when we do?
If you'll make it a holiday, that would increase the holiday pay work to our emergency responders, police and fire, anybody who's on call. The holiday pay right now is, I believe, double, double pay. So there would be a budget impact. I'm not sure what that would be, off the top of my head.
Can we get that information so that we know what that number is?
Yeah, we could probably come back and study that and come back.
Yeah, if y'all, I would say maybe Randolph, maybe just any kind of general things we need to be thinking about, too, when we do something like that. Are there any other, you know, like I said, any kind of, I don't know, just any, yeah, any kind of unforeseen stuff that obviously I can't foresee? I'm just concerned about making sure we don't do something. I'm all for it, for sure, if it's, none of that exists.
Yeah, I was out of town and this place was... They had it, and I said that'd be good, you know. We have excellent employees and we should-
We met on Friday.
Love on them a bit, little bit.
I do think it's probably important, too, to give some consideration to how many paid days off we do have, what those holidays are, and why Good Friday is not in that list. There may be a reason for that, but I'm supportive of it as well. I just, you know, just think we need to look at it.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
I mean-
The second item I have that's really been bothering me. Out of... Let me see. Give me a second. Out of 1,499 employees, we gave 7% to everyone but one employee. And that is bothering me a lot. I cannot, and I've gone to the powers that be, I did not agree and not accepting their explanation, so I would like for us to discuss why this one employee is not getting the 7%.
In the past, what we've done when we have... When we've moved individuals from one pay grade to another pay grade, if it's moved down, generally, we haven't taken away their salaries. We've left them at the same salary level, and we left them there with the consideration that they would stay there until the range that they moved into increased, until they recovered within that range. And we've done that for quite some time, and we've had a few employees. It happens right now that there is one employee who does still fall outside the range. The others that were outside of that range, I don't remember how many there were. There was a handful, 13, 14 of them, outside the range, have now caught up to that range. So what would happen is, as we increase that employee's salary, it just moves them further out and takes them that much longer to catch up to the range. So everyone else in the range is doing the exact same job. They're being paid a certain rate. This individual, because of unique circumstances, could be several different things, is asked to stay there, as opposed to giving up a salary and moving back, is asked to stay there until that range catches up. So this one employee is catching up, I think, based on, depends on how ranges move over the next couple of years. I think the next year or after that, that employee catches up and is within range. So that's been our policy for quite some time.
I still cannot see, out of 1,499 people, one person is out of range. I just cannot see that. The person moved to another department because their department, it closed. So the person had to move somewhere. And because the person was put in a department where she had to take a pay cut, I mean, was not her fault, I just cannot see no other employee out of 1,499 employees that is in the lower wrong class and not getting this 7%. Now, let's say, 'cause I, you know, I've met with you all, I know twice. I just cannot see that. Not disrespecting you, but if that's the case, I would like to, for us to make an exception and give this employee their 7%.
Is it accurate that there's only one employee that didn't get the 7%?
At this point, there is one employee. I mean, when you have a policy and you have however many employees you have, occasionally, there will be an employee that falls outside of that policy and then falls into another policy, whether it's one or 10 or 15. It doesn't really matter. The policies and the practice that we followed is what the practice is. It happens to be that last year, I think there were 13 or 14.
Didn't we, I can't remember, was it last year? I know we had some police officers-
Yeah.
When we fixed all the-
Right.
When we fixed all the compression stuff, there were some, because I remember having a conversation down in the basement with a few of them.
Right. And there were some disciplinary-
Getting higher, basically, than, you know, they were outside of the range to the high side, which means they've been getting paid higher than-
Right.
Their job description.
For a period of time.
I mean, for that group, at least, once I kind of explained that, they're like, you know, don't love it, but I get it.
Yeah.
So did no, was, and just for clarifications, as far as only one person, do we happen to know, I mean, was... If that, if that one employee got zero, were there some people that got less than 7% because they were also outside of their range, but just not by 7%?
Right. So last year, there were 14 people who were not eligible for a raise because they were over-
But I mean, this time around, when we did 7?
This time, 13 of those 14 got some percentage. Now, it was between 6.2 and like 6.9%. So it was not the full 7, but now they are within that range. And so as raises are given and all that, they are eligible at this point.
We've actually got 13 employees or so that actually didn't get the full 7, but it was because they were all outside the range. This employee just happened to be outside the range by more than 7%, right?
Right.
Right.
So-
So is the, can we clarify just one quick thing?
Sure.
Is, you know, we don't, I'm hesitant to wanna talk about specific employee issues. There's no name attached to this. I don't know who it is, so I mean, I don't, but I, I guess, is it appropriate to ask? If you think not, just say no, and maybe we'll do, I mean, seriously, I mean, but... Is the only reason because, is the only reason this person is in that job is because we shut this down? I mean, you know, I guess that the person could-
Well, we shifted, we shifted responsibilities from one department to the next. And then, over a period of time, we went to an outside vendor, and then, so the job changed, and then this employee fit better, was able to perform better in another, in another jobs, which was a lower classification. So as I explained, typically, what happens is they stay making the same rate of pay, but more than other people in that classification, and then-
This person could've got, just let go. The job doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a 7% raise for that. It would be looking for another job, right?
Yeah.
And certainly not leaving at the same pay.
Right. You know, when you have a pay plan, you have to structure and you have to draw lines, and you have to make it work in sync. And you can, if you start creating exceptions, you start having, not having a pay plan. You start having just people being paid at, with all sorts of exceptions. It just so happens, this exception encompasses one person, but that's just the way it happened. It wasn't intentional. It just happened over time that this is the last person left. Now, there might be people in the future, unless what we do is, we don't give them, allow them to stay at the same pay. And if they are put into a classification where other people are making less money doing the same job, then they would move down. And we could just take the pay away and move them down to that. That's a legitimate way to handle that. We've tried to give grace and not do that, recognizing that might be difficult for the person and leave them alone and leave them at the same pay. But, but they have to catch up in that range before, you know, they would get things like increases.
Is it a written policy of ours that we leave them at this? I mean, is it somewhere in the handbook or wherever? I mean, is it some policy, or is this a, I mean, I-
That we leave them at the same pay? I don't know if there's a written policy, we leave them at the same pay, because like I said, we could, I think the policy is we could move them down into the pay that they are within the range because everyone holding the job should be.
That's the way the real world works.
That, that's exactly right.
Motion, you don't make as much money.
Generally, that's the way it happens. So we try not to do it. We try not to do it often. Sometimes it's, it's changes in the organization that's not the employee's fault. Sometimes it might be some other issues that an employee's having, and we try and recognize, in this case, it wasn't necessarily this person's fault. There was some contribution to that, but we didn't feel it was strong enough to move them off their pay necessarily. But, you know, again, they're doing a job that other people are being paid this one rate. They're being paid another, and until that catches up, which it will very shortly, you know, that, that we generally don't increase that pay because then next year is gonna face the same issue. The next year is gonna face the same issue, and we'll be five years out if we give that 7% raise, quite frankly.
Well, let's say we don't-
Then that person will be, I'm sorry, that, that person will then be making more than the same person, making, doing the same exact job.
Yeah, and we'll do this again next year and the year after that and the year after that. It'll be the same situation.
So if, with the economy like it is, which is all messed up, let's say we don't give this 7%, can we give the person something?